Well, no questions.
No.
Yeah. Right, let's let us begin, Bruce.
I'm in the platform. I'd like to raise this student bar. Day to America. It's your government for which change. Why not just under God indivisible, we're the same justice law.
Paul will show that all seven of the board members are present. Does anybody have a conference venue with any item on regional? Okay, move on. I'm motion to approve the consulting agenda. Some moves.
Second.
All those there? Yes. We have two sets of minutes. The first one is a regular sub, excuse me, yeah, so regular sub board meeting from February twenty fourth. Motion to approve. The move, I think, basically.
Second.
Any changes needed on this?
I suppose, I think, um, and, you know, they're not critically important, but I think we want them to be accurate, so.
Do you want to point though?
Yeah, I do, there's, um. Like, Steve, I have notes that I knew about it. So, just, um, on the second page, the spelling of the one just words last name.
Yeah, there's missing an E.
Yeah, so that's an easy fix. And in that same paragraph, I had a question about, um, where it says an SBI grant was used off data lights. And then it says they will have twenty-four hour access, and I don't know what that references.
Members of the community.
Will be able to reference something.
Right, as, as is the case with a lot of other.
Alright, so maybe that could clarify.
Just change, uh, member, uh, they to members.
Yeah, perfect. And then the spelling of Dr. Swatson.
Yes, I noticed that too, but. Yes, have you ever thought of changing the spelling of your last name to, uh? You like, you like the sweat rather than?
Sweat, swoop, swat.
S W E E K?
E T C.
E T C, okay, gotcha. Alright, we'll make note of that, very interesting. So approval, uh, with corrections?
Okay, and I just had to clarify under section B, um, that it was that the budget committee works hard with the issues, and I would encourage the select board to come and listen with an open mind and ears, so I'll just share that with Julia.
Yeah, good, and we did have five of our seven members at last week's meeting. So, with those corrections, all in place. Then we had a special board meeting held in executive session on February tw- uh, twenty-sixth, and it was a interview with the town manager, and they, uh, new motion to approve that also. Jane, second. All with a favor? No items from, uh, the board of assessors? We do not have a public hearing tonight. But we do have an open session for members of the public. Like to speak. Yes, sir, John.
John, I'm just curious, um, comprehensive plan committee, um, I'm assuming the town manager played an integral role in that, and that when he's hired, then you guys will proceed on that. Is that something, if we hire a town manager this year, we're, we're looking to start, like, you know, it must take a lot of time, just a desk has been doing it for like a year, so just kind of curious, uh, what are you guys thoughts on there? If there's a timeline, are you thinking of, uh, doing that so we can, uh, be up to date with the comprehensive plan of next year or two?
Uh, anyone feel? Uh, able to answer that question? We haven't actually, we haven't actually, uh, pinpointed a start date yet, but certainly we do want to wait until the next town manager is appointed, he or she. And, uh, after, after they get, uh, their feet on the ground here, is that the, uh, a proficient time to take a look at that, but you're right. By it's, uh, it should be attended to sometime as calendar year twenty-twenty-five, at least getting that off the ground and getting the committee formulated and get the work started. Other questions or comments from audience members? Hearing and seeing none. We'll move on to, uh, open session for the sub board members. Go ahead, Jane.
Um, well, actually kind of following up on what Sean's comment was, um, I guess I would ask the board, you know, based on the work that we've been doing, we've been interviewing and, um, you know, screening candidates and discussion, that sort of thing, is to, um, maybe each one of us reflect on the list of priorities we would have for this new person. Um, we all have it in our minds, but nothing on paper, so that's my challenge for the group.
Yeah. Perhaps we could, uh, poll members at some point and maybe get everyone's top three to five items, and hopefully there'll be overlap.
And again, I think we're all on different committees, and we all have a conversation in the back of our heads, but no one has put it down on paper and.
That's core need.
Right, so that would be my suggestion.
It should be easy enough to come up with that list. That's true, good. Other comments from board members?
Didn't you have one?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that it was my, uh, privilege to participate in the presentation Saturday afternoon of the, uh, Boston Post Gold Headed cane to the oldest, um, citizen in Dover, Foxcroft. Uh, Flora Sands, age ninety-nine. Um, and, uh, her entire, Sand Stanley was at, were there, many of them have connections to the town. I served on the board, uh, seems like a million years ago, but it was only a couple of decades. And of course, Joe was our solid waste director for many years, and Connie was in the code enforcement office, and, uh, that, uh, I guess Flora's husband was a long time town employee, so it was a really nice, um, event to be able to pay tribute to, uh, a very important family in our community. But for those who don't know, the, the Boston Post cane, uh, was given out by, uh, the Boston Post, which ceased publication in nineteen fifty-six, but, uh, from nineteen oh-nine on, they presented a cane to the oldest citizen of every town, not city, but town in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, and, and Rhode Island. It's over seven hundred canes that were given out. That was before Dover and Foxcroft joined to form one towns. We had both a Dover cane and a Foxcroft cane.
They both showed.
Yeah, the, uh, the cane has a fourteen karat gold knob on the top that has the name of the town, and, uh, it says to be transmitted to to the next person who becomes the oldest, but, uh, the Foxcroft cane was lost decades ago, I don't have any idea where it is. We we hope eventually someone might find it in, uh, in the attic of an old house on this side of the river, which was Foxcroft in the old days, but, uh, they don't actually give the cane to the recipient to keep just so that we don't lose it again. So the historical society keeps that for safekeeping, and it was my pleasure to be there. We brought Mary Ann as the president of the Dover Foxcroft Historical Society. We jointly gave the cane and sliced it up. They had that connection with our, our history over a hundred years ago, even though the paper no longer exists, the cane still exists.
Um, and I did have a conversation with, with Mary just to get to the background, and there is no replica being done now, and actually kind of a suggestion also for the future is to maybe get that small group together again to kind of document what the process is for the selection and who's involved and, and maybe, um, redevelop a replica so that something could be presented.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. If we could, you know, store up a bunch on that, we'd actually have something tangible to keep. Right now, it's, here's your cane, we'll take a photo and then give the cane back. It's kind of, you know, a little damper on the whole presentation idea, but, uh, it is, it is a neat tradition. Um, and it's, it's interesting also, the cane was originally given out only to the oldest man, and, and it was changed in nineteen thirty to have me the oldest resident, and as we all probably have noticed, uh, women tend to live a lot longer than men, so, um, also, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're actually following the reality of lifespan now.
Yeah, it's been so few of those nights, and they were awful. Over the last ten years or so.
I still, I remember writing stories about it when I was a rookie reporter back in the nineteen seventies, and I'd always ask the, the recipient, who was always a woman. You know, what was the secret to her longevity? And usually it was, well, a lifetime of abstention from alcohol and tobacco. Which didn't sound all that much fun to me, but then I did meet a woman who said, well, you know, I usually have a drink around six o'clock every night. That's my, that was my favorite.
And Flora, was she asked that question?
She wasn't asked that question. There was no one there other than Tom and Mary. Any other comments from board members?
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, we'll look at it. Alright, we'll, um, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Any adjustments needed to the agenda, Alcina, that you're aware of? Do you also have anything you want to add on? Right, committee reports, uh, the protection committee, uh, met, uh, in March.
Most of the, most of the issues we talked about are on the agenda.
Okay. And the budget advisory committee had its first meeting last Tuesday, March fourth, to begin the discussion of our bu- budget for the next year. And the second meeting will be tomorrow night, also at six thirty, right here in the room. Thank Chris for sharing that for the, you have a lifetime appointment as the chair of the budget committee?
Yeah, I'm planning on your name, Kane.
But we could use the cane to enforce your. Yes.
Oh, we're to gas for tomorrow. For the budgetary.
Of course, uh, the Mayo Mill Dam Committee met on March sixth and is here tonight to present, uh, the results of their work, so. Um, let's move on to new business. Everyone ready to? Really turn the page. The first item is, uh, an update from code enforcement. There's a couple of issues that we're going to require with, um, non-compliance in both cases, so Brian and Man are both here.
Um, the first one is a situation that Cindy had brought to me, a complaint she had received, um, that one Winter Street, right on the corner, it's, they've got probably, well, they had five, they're, remove one car. There were four cars that appear to be unregistered, uninspected. There's a they're in the back row, and then the cars they're using are on the drive, on the roadside of the yard. Um, I've written to them four times. I've had no response, and like I said, there's one car missing out of five that apparently could be removed. I don't see plates. Just vehicles. There's probably ten or twelve, when all the people at home that live there, with the five four remaining in the back, and whatever's in front. So it's just the direction that you'd like us to go.
No attempt to screen any of these, um, unregistered vehicles from view, so?
No.
Okay.
No.
So which end of winter is it?
Right, um, right on the North Street corner. Yes.
And, and it's, is it one? What are people allowed? One vehicle that's unregistered?
Right.
Three?
It is three, okay.
If you have more than that, it's considered a license, don't care. Of course, I think there's probably a few, few places in Maine. But no, no attempt to, uh, no attempt to respond whatsoever.
So you sent four letters?
Uh, yes, I've sent four letters, um, no response, um, and I've told them that please come forward to this meeting and be heard. We were just gonna bring it, we were gonna bring it to the board and invited them to take part in the meeting.
And so someone's living in the house?
Yeah, I think when the person who asked me about it, I said, you know, we probably didn't notice this, it was out of town on the back rooms, but.
Right.
Everybody goes by that house all the time, so.
High visibility. Alright, well, since the other, the other one, uh, that you want to require, that's also the issue of non-compliance, why don't, you know, why don't you talk about that too? Maybe we can discuss both of them.
The other one is a little different. Um, Brian called me, he was out, um, in October, going to check something, and he called me. He found, he saw someone building. So, um, and so he had me call the property owner, and, uh, I said, property owner, you're building, you need a permit. Oh, well, um, I have a business and the contractors are supposed to get that. And I said, no, they didn't, you need to get it. I called him twice. And then I threatened to stop the building process if they didn't get a permit. So then they started emailing Brian. And Brian sent him a permit, an application, and that was in October. The end of November, he sent it back. And then didn't hear from him, and in January, I said, I need payment for your permit. And he responded with, oh, I paid it, and the check has been cashed. So I went to the town office, and the girl looked under the person's name, under just the last name, under just the first name, for just the figure from November first until December thirty-first. Nothing in any of those fields showed up. So they don't have a check for that amount even that was cashed. So I responded, can you please provide me a copy of your canceled check? So that I can figure out where we, how we made a mistake, and how I can fix it and apply it to the permit. Um, he sent me a copy of the duplicate out of his checkbook. And I said, I, I can't accept that. I need a copy of the check from your, cancel check from your, your banking institution. His response was, well, I didn't cancel the check, so I don't know what you want. So I sent back another email, and I detailed, I mean, from your financial institution, if the town can't, um, processed it, we go to your financial institution, they would stamp it on the back. Can you please send me a copy of the front and back? So that we can straighten out our records and I can get your permit to you, because he's now asked for the permit, but I won't give it without payment.
And could you refresh my mind on how much?
His permit is five hundred dollars. It's a big building. It's a, it's a big home. Um, and I'm getting nowhere, and then he responds to Brian and says, well, Brian was gonna check in the office for me. I already did it, and I already responded, so Brian responded to him and said, we don't have it. So this has been going on since January, and finally, a week and a half ago, I emailed him and I said, look, please provide me the information by the fifth of March, or I'm gonna have to bring it to the board. I don't want to do this. Would you please just provide me the information to show the payment? And here we are.
Have we tried, um, going to the court and getting a temporary restraining order on someone like that who basically is a scofflaw, refuses to uh, pay the permit? I mean, if they, if you don't follow the law and don't pay the permit, the court has very little sympathy for people in that situation, and if I give them a temporary restraining order, they will shut down any construction on that, which might.
Because he is operating without a permit.
Right, they might, you know, pay attention to, uh, Brian.
This has never happened. This is the first time since I've been here that this, usually people pay. If you try them long enough, they end up making good or whatever, um. And the individual we're dealing with, I'm shocked we're going through this, but here we are. Um, so no, we, we would just need direction from the board, whether our attorneys, maybe they reach out to him and say, he, he's lost his effort, or we're gonna go to court, we'll do this payment, or we'll just put an injunction on his building.
Yeah.
Obviously, none of us want to be here and do this, but the town needs to get paid their fair for the building permit, so.
And at what point is it considered after the fact? He's been building since October. But, and after the fact is a double fee. Um, is it after the, is after the fact, once it's completed? Or is it after we've been frustrated?
Well, you know, again, I think you're sending the message, it's okay to build without a permit.
Right, and I don't want to.
So, you know, I would suggest what Tom is saying. And or they're still continuing to do construction? Have we documented that?
Um, I haven't been out, to be honest with you, because I honestly thought he was gonna take care of it, and he still hasn't, so I can go tomorrow and see where we're at.
I mean, walking around snapping pictures, I think that gives the town a better position of saying. And, you know, hey, I recently built, and if I didn't have my permit, that's what.
Right, well, you know, if you're breaking the law, you tend to get people's attention more readily by having a lawyer write them a letter and say, hey, listen, this money should be paid by X date, or else we will be going to the district court, Bill talks about, and getting a restraining order against, against people to shut down any activity at that site until the permit is, is paid. And for someone who's been giving you the runaround for almost half a year now, you don't have a whole lot of sympathy for that, and no sympathy.
Where I'm getting.
I know, this is an incredibly frustrating part of the code enforcement officer. You, you ask people nicely, and you're persistent, and they still basically blow you off.
And I've never said, I don't believe you didn't pay me. It's always been, please show it to me so that I can correct whatever we didn't get right.
Yeah.
Or maybe he did mail it and it's lost in the mail, or maybe it's stuck between two, his seats in his car, I mean.
Or maybe he just.
That was that one as well. Trying to give the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, to someone who has missed that benefit.
It, it also just seems like you're in the belief that this is a person that completely affords five hundred dollars.
Oh, yes.
And so it's not, I mean, you know, a reasonable person would say, I'm so sorry, let me generate another check, or I'll check with my bank and get right back to you, and none of that is happening, so.
Just, this is a significant home, so I would, really nothing compared with this home, so.
It'll be four thousand square feet.
Yeah, I've just checked on where that is.
Oh, I had a feeling I knew where it was. I just wanted to double check on that.
So what, what is the pleasure of the board? Do we, uh, want to give authorization to code enforcement officers to, uh, uh, consult with our town attorney and have him send a, uh, strongly worded letter threatening illegal action on a board?
Yes.
For both?
Well, I would, I would say yes for both.
Yes, for both.
Um, one is more egregious than the other, in my viewpoint, but both of them have not followed the law, so that'll, in terms of getting their attention, that's the best we can do, I think. We, want someone to make a, uh, much of that effect, so?
Yeah, I would move that we, um, pass strong model or someone in his office to generate the letters we've been discussing and
They're second to that, I'm interested. Picking up pretty well. And is that pretty much what you need to, I mean, John, John Powell has written, uh, more than a few letters. Not, yeah. Alright, all those in favor of taking, uh, action? Good luck. Other than sending a record to the, to the Winter Street place and starting to pull the cars away, that would also result in some unpleasant.
Yes, and very often interaction, I'm sure.
Alright, thank you. I'm sorry you have to deal with. Alright, uh, item B also has to do with, uh, Brian, you're no longer the code enforcement officer. You're now the fire chief of the Dover Foxcroft. So you, you'd like to tap into the Gray Trust Funds to purchase, uh, some equipment, specifically a, um, um, a pickup truck and also a snowmobile trailer.
That is correct.
On the Gray Fund, yeah.
Um, for the ones that aren't aware of the Gray Trust Funds that may be new to the board, um, I don't know how long ago the Gray family, um, left some money to some entities in this town, the fire department being one, the library being one, and I believe the hospital. I want to say there's a fourth, but I can't remember, and I don't know the exact timeframe, but the original amount was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And I believe the fire department was under the water district at this time. Um, and the department has set an internal policy that we don't want to let the funds drop below a hundred and twenty thousand, we borrow off the principal above if we need equipment or stuff like that. Um, so some things have come up, and Emily and I have checked the account, and it's roughly around just shy of two hundred and two thousand, so about eighty-two thousand dollars is in there for the department to pull. And the reason number one, we're looking at a utility pickup for various reasons, is, uh, we have numerous trailers that need to be pulled, and it's very difficult to pull a snowmobile or a boat or, um, side by side with a fire truck. They're hard to see, we're starting to ding up trailers, we're starting to ding up the back of the trucks, so it's very difficult to maneuver those. Secondly, um, people's personal vehicles being heavily relied on, on fire scenes. Justin Batmine was in guilt for Thursday for Purdue Sanukian Fire. And Tommy got back to the station, my personal figure had mud, ash, the back of it was ruined. I had to rinse it out before we took a family trip, so all our stuff was sitting in water for the ride. So I want to alleviate that problem of using personal pickups, um. We are getting farther into EMS, and we've gone to numerous winter calls, where we're gonna get into dryways, we've had a shovel, we've had two, so this utility pickup, we'll, we'll have a plow with it. Um, and it will help re alleviate around the station during storms. We can take care of our own parking lots and stuff like that, if a couple of works is inundated. Um, take care of our own rubbish. It's born. We want to purchase a utility pickup out of it to help relieve all the burden on other departments, plus our own personal vehicles that are being moved for everything. Um, and with how the Gray Estate's set up, it's basically, it's American Trust Funds manager for the department and the town, but we're not allowed to touch the funds without the board's permission. It was set up for that years ago, so the board kind of oversees and allows transactions that they feel comfortable with or not. Um, so our goal is to purchase a new utility pickup and a funds allow, which I believe they don't know, is, uh, I think both snowmobile trailer to get our stuff back inside. We have an open deck trailer, but every time you get to a call, it's covered in salt slash mud. We had a call this winter that it was really nice out. Tommy get there, a rescue sled that the association had purchased and given to the department of thirteen thousand dollars was covered in mud, couldn't even see it. So we decided we need to do something about that, and you feel right now, obviously, this stock market's doing good, this would be a good opportunity to make those purchases with the trust fund and not on the taxpayers.
Well, not this week. Not the last few days.
Well, I gotta call and I wanna see where we're at, so hopefully the place does.
Okay.
So some move, motion?
Well, I was like, uh, so you have eighty thousand dollars available. You don't have an estimate on, on purchase for these two items yet, or you feel?
Yeah, we, we've been meeting with dealers, roughly, um, we gotta go over quotes tomorrow night, but right now, we're leaning towards, uh, O'Conners out of Augusta for the pickup, the plow, everything that we need in the pickup, delivered to our station, which is right around the sixty-two thousand dollar mark. Um, and then the trailers, we're getting quotes back, but I believe we're dealing with a dealer out of Angkor or Madison, and they're going kind of back and forth. We're right around the thirteen mark for that, um, and then we have kind of a budget, you know, I'll put a radio in the truck and then put lights on and stuff like that. We may not have enough funds totally to get stuff lettered, but if that's the case, then I'll just watch my O and M and pull it out of that at the end of the year, next year, to, you know, get the lettering on it.
So at this point, you're just asking for approval to tap the trust fund. We don't have firm, uh, prices on this, but it looks like we have enough funding in the trust to cover the.
Question about, um, sounds like it's something that's just become, because of kind of calls you've had recently, it was kind of straw that broke the camel's back, has it been talked about in the protection committee?
Uh, yes, as Jane said, this was one of the big topics that we talked about. I went to our department first, we had a meeting about it. Uh, majority of the departments there voted for it and agreed on it. Um, it's been a need for years, it's just different priorities of different, and, and how our department's shifting and growing, and I personally don't condone guys using their personal vehicles, getting stoked up and plowing parking lots and hauling trash and getting ruined, um. And we feel if the money's there, that this is a good opportunity to get this purchase, you know, the last thing we want to do is come before the board and ask for more taxpayers' dollars, so we thought this would be a good opportunity to fill that need.
It's like a pretty easy decision. Who wants to make the motion to, uh, approve, uh, access to the Gray Fund for those items?
Well, I move to approve the use of the funds to purchase a utility pickup truck with funds from the Gray Trust.
Second.
Second.
All with a favor? And then another motion on the snowmobile trailer?
I again move to approve the snowmobile trailer with the funds from the Gray Trust.
Second.
We're all in favor of that? Okay.
Thank you.
And the next item, uh, deals with the feasibility study update on the EMS, uh, study, is that something you want to do, or are you, I know Eric is, you know, also.
Yeah, Eric will come up, but Elsina, I think is gonna start, and then Eric and I will be here if we need to answer anything.
We'll leave it in, Elsina's capable here.
So previously, we had a, another complaint that was on this, um, that had, well, started working on the uh, feasibility study, and unfortunately, due to some conflict of interest, we had to back away from that contract, so we went ahead and pushed this back out to bid. It's a kind of a niche, um, deal. So it was a very select number of people that were able to fill this need, so those folks, um, received an RFP on that, and we got back a, um, um, a D C N packet, a Yeah, his, the gentleman, Rory Plutnum is his name, um, his scope of work as well, this very extensive resume. Um, his scope of work as well, this very extensive resume, um, that he has and experience um for this. And yeah, it's pretty much, and he can start as soon as possible, and he's a time sensitive item.
His company is Atlantic Life Safety Services located in Wyndham.
Yep.
And he estimates the cost would be a ten thousand dollars a week study, and he should have it in our hands by early May.
That is the hope, yes.
Question, sir.
Yeah, is that um a similar amount as we were able to tell the first person?
Unfortunately, no, um, this is a slightly higher amount um than the first individual. However, the scope that he is covering is something that is a lot more broader, that could be used down, down the road for any kind of analytics or statistics and such.
Yeah, I, I was looking at his material limit, precautions, I've been everywhere.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's very, very well.
Not that.
No.
All perspective. Um, and, and again, it did come through protection. We also, my understanding is this came from a list that was generated by Maine EMS.
Correct, so Maine EMS does not endorse or doesn't, yeah, promote any individual, however, they did provide a list of individuals that are in this field. Um, that could help out, and this went out to everybody, and.
So he's seen by them as a qualified.
That's correct, yes, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging the subject of interest. I don't know how that came forward, but it's a good thing to act on that and be about board, so I appreciate that, knowing that.
The motion to uh accept the bid from uh this company, Atlantic Life Security.
I'm moved to accept the bid from Rory Plutnum.
And the second?
Second.
Thanks, you got it. Any further questions? All those in favor? All right. So they got the job and do the work. Right, moving on to item number B, uh, this is the Mayo Mill DM Committee recommendation to the Select Board. Uh, we have uh seven out of nine members of the committee are here, including Steve and Emery and Tracy from the Select Board, Bill Hirsthammer who's standing up, Tom Hadley, Chris Moss, and Andy's marketing just behind, behind Mr. Arnold. So thank, first of all, I want to thank everyone who's been on the committee for doing a ton of work on this. We look forward to hearing. Uh, Jeffy Dallas, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, you have a copy of the presentation. Elsina's going to put it up on the screen. I'm going to try and limit it to ten, fifteen minutes. Uh, really just hitting the highlights as we go along, if there are any specific questions that you have on a particular point. Obviously, do not hesitate to stop me. There's a lot that has gone on over the course of the last six months. As Tracy and other members of the uh committee can attest to, so again, don't hesitate if there's some confusion. The presentation you're getting is really just going to cover the conclusions and recommendations. Attached to it, we did put some appendices of key items from the February fourth meeting to the town uh as bits to be able to have as part of that record. People work. So this is our presentation. Go report to the Select Board next. Want you, Elsina? Uh, people can see good. Okay, mission statement is very critical because people of the mission statement, and the mission statement was to present the town with a plan for keeping the dam and empowerment with or without power generation, including costs and funding sources. And with or without power generation really means, do we surrender the FERC license? Next, the members of the committee, there were nine in total, uh, that we just introduced, so next. The committee has met eleven times since last August. Different accomplishments that occurred during those eleven times, what was covered. So there has been quite a bit of work being done, both as committee members and also outside the committee in terms of people doing research, getting information and buying new things. So let's get looking at accomplishments to date. This is the same slide that was shown in the February fourth meeting to the general public, and that is gain an understanding of the deficiencies then and those that needed to be corrected. Initial understanding of a path towards correcting those deficiencies. Reviewing consultant report and arrived at proposed resolution of the hydro power generation. Reached agreement for the feasibility purposes of potential costs for the project, and again, I emphasize the word feasibility. We're at the feasibility stage based on the information that was generated by the previous dam committee. We have not gone to a fully engineered project to be able to anchor down the cost to a very smaller margin. So we do have feasibility, we have an idea of the problem at cost, but not yet necessarily a fully defined scope with timing and all the other pieces. But it's good enough for us to be able to go with the work we have today. The initial work on potential outside funding from sources, and then now we're reporting obviously to members of the Select Board and also to the town itself. So let's go first with what the conclusions are. By main conclusions that we have. First and most important, power generation is not economic. We've gone through that. We had work that was financed from Klein Schmidt. To be able to understand what the cost would be for selling electricity, reviewing what the cost would be to be able to build just a powerhouse, rejuvenate, repower, have the generator in there. So it is not economically feasible. One of the appendices that you have as part of the report goes into the key pages from the public meeting. Going through the, the cost to be able to do the generation, what we would get for revenue for it, what it would mean or impact in terms of capital project and financing the capital project. Second, for feasibility purposes, the total project cost estimate to satisfy FERC license surrender requirements will likely be somewhere in the range of seven to ten million dollars. Ten million is the number we have from the feasibility work. We have work within the dam committee group and saying it could be lower, but seven to ten is a good range. It very easily could hit ten. It could also possibly it's be at seven. Until we have a more detailed project engineered, we're not going to be able to know what it is. And until we had then quotes on a construction engineering and all the parts. And it's not just construction that we're working with. We're also working with all of the issues associated with surrendering the FERC license. Environmental studies have to be done, uh biological assessment has to be done. We need some other things that we're going to talk about in terms of the recommendations. So we're looking at this, it's not just a construction job. It's an engineering job and a whole series of other pieces that are required in order to fully surrender the FERC license and move on with the town for that. Financing costs to a ten million dollar number with no additional financing available could run as high as six million dollars in addition to a ten million dollar number over twenty-five years, if that's how it's financed. If it were a seven million dollar number for the cost, it would be proportionally less, but still significant money. That only might be four and a half million. But so when people talk about the cost, if we talk about it, we're talking what it would cost to install a project. But we don't have the cash in hand in town to be able to afford that, therefore it has to be financed. And it has to be financed over a period of time, is my assumption. Obviously, that's a decision for the board, and that's the assumption we went under. Uh, one of the notes we have, we wanted to bring forward, is the town has an unsolicited offer to provide a firm fixed price quote that catches all of the items required within the original referendum budget, so we do know that people are interested in doing the work. And we're getting an idea and some reality checks in terms of what the probable cost of doing those various construction parts of the project are. Final one is outside funding sources were identified as applicable. And, and they are limited, they're competitive, and above all, they're uncertain. We don't know whether or not we're going to be able to get these, and Elsina can talk in more detail about that separately. Uncertainty is probably one of the themes that came through in the discussions that we had during the project. And any project you work on, there is uncertainty. So what are some, we tried to define, I got, you know, tried to brainstorm, what are those uncertainties that we're going to see? We can say the number is ten billion, or number seven million, whatever happens to be, there's still, we don't know at this point in time. And even if you do have a fully engineered project, you don't know either. Example brought up by Steve during the meetings was there was, what was it, two and a half million dollars for the potentially glorified bridge on Lincoln Street? And it came in at over three and a half million dollars, and that was a project that had gone to feasibility study and other pieces, so. When we're looking at what the cost of this is as part of a committee, if we go too low and you say, let's say we can go for five million, and it turns out to be ten, that's a serious problem. If it's ten million and comes in less than that, that's not as much of a problem. But it's still a problem because that's serious money. So let's look at some of the uncertainties, and I tried to categorize these based on, go through the next slide. Based on the discussions we had during the meetings. For us, I've done project work previously in my life, and these are some of the types of issues whenever you're doing a project you look at. So one of the uncertainties that you've got is financial risk. If interest rates change, very critical, and for us, outside funding, if there's outside funding available and we depend upon that, that's good, but if we depend upon outside funding to do the project and it doesn't show up, then you've got a serious problem. So you've got financial risks that are being taken. The obvious ones that always occur with projects you have to be worried about, and that's why you have a contingency or cost overruns. This particular project has some serious regulatory and compliance risks related to FERC and FERC's wanting to transfer the license from their control to the control of the other regulatory agencies, both state and national. So you've got a real compliance issue you have to work through. We also have an issue because of the dam where it's located, its fish passage requirements for endangered species. You've got a lot of NGOs or non-governmental organizations that are going to put their ten cents in. And their ten cents is going to be not, not necessarily in the type of plan we come up with. They may want to see other things and other issues, which then lead to getting out of scope, cost overruns, or other financial risks. There's also particularly related to this because of fish passage type technical and design risks. We could design a fish passage, and the fish passage is good, it's there, it meets certain standards. But it may not be effective, and that gets back to operational risk. So fish passage is one of the key risks that is here in us being able, us as a town, being able to work with this and keep it in. We have to have some ideas as we go through this, whether fish passage is going to meet the standards that are out there. I don't know if you all see what's going on with Brookfield on the Penobscot, excuse me, on the Kennebec River. Brookfield is a very, very large, Brookfield is a renewable resource, it's a very large corporation. And they have been at the Shawnee Dam and the other, two of the other dams down in on the Kennebec towards the Waterville, Skowhegan area. They've had nothing but profits associated with trying to be able to get through technical and design issues associated with fish, fish passage, and then proving operationally that the fish passage is effective. And there's a specific definition for effectiveness that they have to work through. There's obviously the issues of scheduling delays. If the year you decide to do this work, you have an incredible amount of wet summer and you can't actually get the work done in the time period allotted. You, you then are stuck that you can't do it in one year, which then further increase your costs causing delays. One of the reasons that that's important is you only have a limited period of time that this work can be done in a reasonable fashion to meet the requirements, for example, for fish passage. You can't really do it before the middle of June, end of June, you can't do it into September because in the June period, you've got the fish coming up. In the September period and beyond, you have the fish going down. So you only have a limited period. The work that needs to be done can be done within that period, but the risk associated is what if you have weather delays, what if there's some regulatory or even supply chain problem in the things that you need to have done? So it's not a simple project, and it's a fairly difficult one to manage. It's very manageable, people do it, but you have to look out for that. The last one, we're live to supply chain disruption, supplier reliability. And I don't know if you've ever done a house project, and the person you have coming through the house project, you thought was good, you heard good things about. And it turns out that the person just is terrible. I've had that happen on one of the projects I did with my previous house. So you always have to work with that, venture suppliers, make sure they're going to be able to deliver what they say, and other, on a force majeure. There's an earthquake and it causes problems, you know, that there are crazy stuff that can happen. There's a tornado that, there's this and that, always possible to happen and always have to be dealt with. So these are some of the project uncertainties or risks that we thought of it. People need to have in their minds as they look at an expensive project and as they look at how they're going to execute it. It's very, you can get through a project, but it's not simple. It has to be well managed, it has to be well done. So getting on to recommendations, I have three pay, any questions so far? Board members, I know I'm going a little quick because I'm trying to stay within a certain time.
You look fun.
Yes, please.
I have no idea what the um fines would be imposed by FERC, correct?
There is, there is no idea at this point in time. To give you an example of what it could be. On the last August of twenty twenty-four, there was a FERC safety inspection. In that FERC safety inspection, there were eight items, nine items that were brought up. Five of those five items are still outstanding. Each one of those, if FERC wanted to, I don't believe, but I'm not, you know, I, I, I'm not authority, I'm not a FERC lawyer. Each one of those is suitable for a two thousand dollar a day fine. So if you have five at a two thousand dollar, now a lawyer can tell us more, specific lawyer, but this is one of the issues that's there. Their, their fines are significant. Now, they only get to a fine if it's really egregious in what you're doing. Okay?
Thank you.
So, number one. The dam committee recommends abandoning plans to reduce power at the Mayo Mill Dam site and surrender the FERC operating license. This now starts a process. Because now, once we say we're not going to generate power, you then have to surrender the license, then as a whole process unto itself. The dam committee's mission is slash was to produce a plan for keeping the dam and empowerment, as we saw in the mission statement. That plan will be the application, as of this point in time, will be the application to FERC for the surrender of the Mayo Mill license. The Select Board means to authorize the committee to begin that work, and this work may take up to a year to complete. Now, based on our initial, what was a, we the proper term, uh, Steve, on the initial mission that we were given. This is the recommendation. We were not there to take the dam out. We were not there to do other things. We were there to say, surrender, keep the, and what is the cost? Select Board Town Management should immediately contact FERC to get another delay of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five deadline for FERC license surrender, or telling it what it's going to do for the FERC license surrender. And that's both surrender and delivery of a claim. Next. The dam committee should identify and recommend legal counsel familiar with FERC matters to begin legal work for the dam surrender. So we have legal work in piece of testimony. The dam committee should identify and recommend a consultant to guide the town through the entire FERC licensing surrender process. Nobody in the town that I know, myself included, I've done a lot of reading on this, knows what's required to go through for the FERC license, license surrender. We don't. We need somebody that can guide us through that process. Now, to give you an idea of what would the cost be for something like that. Klein Schmidt has people that can do this type of work, there are other organizations, Klein Schmidt, we kind of consider the gold standard for dam and dam replacing. Their people in Klein Schmidt, their fee is run anywhere from a hundred dollars an hour to three hundred dollars. So let's just say you have somebody at two hundred dollars an hour. If in the course of the next year, you took that two hundred dollars an hour and that person worked a thousand hours, which would be twenty hours a week for the course of fifty weeks. That's two hundred thousand dollars. But that's two hundred thousand dollars well spent because we don't know how to go through that process, who to talk with, when to talk with, how to work with. The dam committee should work to receive a complete project cost estimate from a party who submitted an unsolicited offer for the dam project work when bids for that work are required. So we know we have somebody in town who's interested to do the construction work and some other work beyond. If the dam committee in turn does continue on, they should definitely look at this individual because they're local. But also the town, I assume, we, we know has a policy where we need to go out for quotations on any of the projects that are there. So that's just a given, but we know we have somebody that seems to be a very good opportunity, does good construction work, that we could take advantage, who's local. If that was the decision of the board and the town voters to be able to go. Next. While the dam committee can likely find candidates for the attorney and the consultant, FERC consultant, without cost as an RFP. All subsequent work to prepare the formal FERC surrender application for up to a year, because that's the time we believe it's going to take, because that's the normal timeframe, will require significant funding. The rough estimate for this work is between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars for the next year. The dam committee is asking for the board to commit to fund that work in order to proceed. And again, you saw, this number is not just pie in the sky pulled out of, you know, our heads. You look at the cost, look at what a lawyer charges, how many hours would you have with a lawyer, how many hours you have of this? We're going to have engineering work that needs to be done. We're going to have to start work in terms of the biological assessment, which is a fish study and a water study. And those don't come cheap. We can find out how much they cost by doing RFP. We can find out how much they cost by doing RFPs, but there's significant money that we're looking at spending just to get the process going. Just to get the application in and then have that application proceeding with how FERC does its work. Finally, the select board and dam committee will work together to raise awareness of the Mayo Mill Dam project amongst townspeople through outreach or rants. What other is possible? So that's basically it.
I just want to add one little bit of detail to the estimated cost of getting us through this process. We had somebody here with firsthand knowledge, worked for the company that managed several dams in this area, including the one at Brown Mill. And he said, an application renewal, this is not what we're doing. With FERC is running, was it 1.2?
1.2, 1.5, yeah, 1.2, 1.5.
That's just the renew or a license.
What was that? What was the figure? 1.2 to 1.5 minutes, 1.2 minutes.
So it's a, it's a really eye popping amount of money to get this process through. We're estimating that our process will be simpler and therefore not as expensive. But, you know, I think most people don't have, I guess, a sense that just figuring out how to work through. An application is that expensive, but it really is.
The reason it's expensive too is because it's not a simple process. For example, you hand in, you want a building permit to build a house, hand it in, have your basic plans, straight forward plans. You can do building design for that and then pay your $500 and go. There's a lot of time that gets chewed up in between and money that has to be spent to be able to get through that. I don't know honestly whether we are, we have, I think, 1.3 in our $10 million number. We have 1.3 million in that particular piece for that to cover the five years for the extent of time we believe it's going to take.
Yeah, that's the, right, the project management piece.
Yes.
Yeah.
Question on the initial cost you cite of $300,000 to $500,000 for that surrender process. Do you anticipate doing that first phase of the larger borrowing package to fund the whole project? Or excluding it in the municipal budget that we're putting together for the next fiscal year starting July first?
So our, the issue we have is that we have to go through a surrender process no matter what. So however, we, whatever the details of the remediation of the dam might be. Including the specific addressing the fish ladder and the fish passage and other things. We don't know, but we know we have to do the process regardless. And so we figured that this is enough to get the consultants on board, start getting some estimates, start getting engineers lined up. And as Bill says, we're anticipating over the course of the project that this, the budget for the consulting management will be higher. But this is what we need to have on tap for the initial period.
And that gets us to the FERC application being submitted. Once it is submitted, then it goes through an entire process on its own that we have no control.
Yeah, and I get that. I guess my question to build out a little bit more is, is this the first phase of a larger financing that we can spread over more than one year? Or is it just going to impact just the next budget year? We're already dealing with trying to put together a budget for our next fiscal year that already is unaffordable. And we're having to think in terms of cutting the proposal before us sort of, I mean, we're not going to be able to cut our way deep enough in base to afford a half a million dollars in the next year without really.
We don't know what, because we haven't started this process yet. We don't know how this, let's just say that the low end 300,000 is the number that turns out to be. We have not set up any terms with anybody. They could say, you know, just here's a retainer fee, we'll charge you over time and it might be spreadable over more than one fiscal year. Yeah, but we don't, the problem is at this point, we have no idea because we haven't actually gone through the process of finding anybody. So, I mean, there are other options available to us, which is essentially borrowing money to pay the consultants. That is, obviously it winds up being more expensive to do it that way. But if we could pay as we go. And so if, if it turns out to be 300,000 and there's a split on the next fiscal year, then we're not going to pay them all that whole one year.
That's to be determined.
Yeah.
Well, the money fix to be determined.
And money will be spent after this first crunch of money?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This is, this is just the beginning.
Hang on a second, Chris, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I just wanted to reinforce that for us to produce the plan that was in our, in our remit is, is that surrender application.
Yeah.
That document, whether it's two pages or a hundred, is really what we're aiming for.
Right.
I would suggest that we get ahold of somebody who's impartial, to sit down and give us a couple of hours of their time. To just talk us through people who've done this before, those sort of thing. What I'd do probably tomorrow morning, call up our lawyers and find somebody who's done this over there, probably not our normal law firm. And see if we can drag him in for a couple of hours.
There are law firms that specialize in just environmental projects.
Absolutely. There are a good client, we see who did that. But I think a couple of hours would help us a lot.
Yeah, I agree.
There is, we do, we do have one advantage, I think, which is that because we're primarily dealing with a federal entity. And not the states, the state tends to just follow the federal process. This means that we can open it up to consultants from pretty much anywhere. And especially with technology that we have and we have a consultant in Texas and that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be probable. I don't think it would rule it out. Whereas if this was strictly state based thing, the chances of finding somebody from outside of New England that could help us would be small. So we're, it's a highly specialized field, but we don't have to cast the net just within side of our immediate New England area.
There are people in the New England area we can do it with, but you're right, your point as well.
Yeah, so I've had a few people over the last couple of weeks say, so, two years ago. Yeah, we voted to keep the dam.
It just lost you.
Of people who have said, okay, so when we were working on that pathway. The Atlantic Salmon Federation and the EBIT Conservancy and their consultants were going within their scope of work. We're going to pay for the FERC re-lease machine. So people have said to me, is there an opportunity to abandon this course of action? If the public really understands now what's happening and the cost of these. What could be the cost of this project longer term? So I have said, you know, the townspeople voted to keep the dam, so we're proceeding in that direction. But could you speak more to that? Because I think it's, these light bulbs are going off for folks about, well, wait a minute. This was going to be paid for previously without our tax money. And so why can't we go back to that?
The, so. The previous arrangement, the options we've had was for the removal of the dam to not be on our dime. Keeping the dam was always going to be on our dime.
Right.
Or us to figure out who can help pay for it. But the Atlantic Salmon Federation and that coalition, no interest in keeping the dam. They may have interest in helping us with the fish passage. If it makes a difference between getting the best fish passage ever and what we could afford. If there's some difference between that, it's entirely possible. At the very least, I expect that they would help with the consulting part of it. They're, they're going to be involved one way or another because that is part of the FERC surrender process. Yeah, so we have to go on the presumption that nobody's going to help us out with money. Least, least to get this thing started, there's no sources of funding lined up for that. So, as I said, we have to do the FERC surrender license no matter what. We should allocate some amount of money for it. However, the greater, the greater issue that is presented is we need to make sure that everybody understands that this is just a start. And if they approve of this amount of money to start the process, they're, they're going to be on the hook for spending the rest. Whether we ask for it now upfront or over a number of years. That's, that's a decision that I don't think we're prepared to do tonight. But there are, there are a lot of different ways of doing it. We do have to make sure though that everybody understands that if we go forward with this, there's no turning back. Without excruciating costs. I mean theoretically, we could get halfway done and then decide to tear it out. But all the money spent up until that point will be lost and then we'll have to spend new money to get it thrown out. Is the option still available? We've, we've had discussions about this. There has been some outreach to the point person that had been doing it for Atlantic Salmon Federation. She no longer works for them. She now works for NOAA, which is one of the sources of possible funding to help us. And the message we got was they're willing to listen. That's it. There's, there's no, she was not in a position to commit to anything. So we don't know, I mean, if that option is still available.
Can I add to that, Steve? My thoughts were that during the process, when we voted on that is, I guess, if we came up to a public vote for funding for the, for the fixing of the dam. And the voters voted it down, that, that would be your, your key to reassess the situation. Because right now you have a mandate that says, we are pursuing this process like Steve said. We have to do the FERC process no matter what, but we're pursuing keeping the dam. So if we have a vote for funding and the public says no, then we have no choice but to reassess because there's not going to be any money. There's no mandate to fix it. That's, that's, I think, the town's key to reassess it on that particular thing. Until then, till, till we have that vote, we're still in the mandate now to fix this.
Right. We, we have a bit of a problem where the townspeople voted a mandate, we did not vote a budget for. And we can go back and think about, well, how did that happen? But that's the pickle we're in. We had a situation with our town years ago where there was a split ballot motion for improving, increasing our road budget. And the state mandated that we had it in two separate ballot measures. People approved the budget increase but did not approve the money for it. So we did not get it, we did not, our roads did not magically get fixed without additional money. And it took us a couple of years to come back around and better inform people that they do hold the second time around that work.
Yeah, I agree with your assessment, Sean. I mean, I think the, it was clearly presented to the voters and said they, they wanted to keep the dam. Our next step is not to relitigate the same question again, hoping we'll get a different answer. Our next step is to say, I personally disagree with the decision we've made, but I also respect the decision. And the next step for us is to go back to the voters and say, you want this, this is the bill to pay for what you want. And as you say, if they, if they see just how ruinous the cost of that would be, they might change their mind, but we can't. But until they make that decision and vote whether or not to fund the work that needs to be done, we have to go on the assumption that we're keeping the dam. And if they say no, and we're back at square one, we can't say it's square one because we've still got the federal government's employees and regulatory issues hanging over our head. And we cannot continue to ignore that. So I think we need to, to go to voters with an item that requests funding for this project and then react to that.
We just don't want to see this go to a vote, you know, they voted down and then you guys push to, to remove it. This, this continues, you know, this life cycle continues. You can't, you can't keep doing it. Depends on the votes, but there's got to be a decision made in the next few years. We can't just keep pushing this off down the road despite what the voters do in the board. It's got to come to a conclusion.
So, one thing about the, just as a practical matter, allocating money towards. Depends on how we word it, but allocating money towards addressing the dam issue. If, I mean, we need the money one way or another, no matter what. So even if the wording of the ballot measure that goes into June. Assuming June, circle back around to that. We need to, it, it could be used for either purpose. Like if everybody votes it down and says, hell no, we're not going to pay for, for the dam. We're still going to need money to go through the surrender process. The details of which will be different, but it's still going to be expensive. The other way is, sure, fine, we're, we're okay with, with all of this money. The same amount raised for the consultant and getting the surrender process started, still there. But that would be aimed at a different outcome. We don't have to vote on this in June. But then that gets into, we can't start any work until we have received money, which then would mean a special town meeting. Which would then mean trying to get the money raised off of the second half of the tax committee. And we all know that there's, there's pros and cons. One of the pros is that we should have more information. We will have had the time to sit down with a consultant. We would have a better idea of how much money to ask for the, for the initial consultant. Downside is that there is, my, my personal feeling from talking with people in town over a long period of time is that they don't tend to like special town meetings where big money is raised. There's a, there's, has been a feeling that this is something that's done in the dead of night when nobody knows about it. It's a sneaky way to get more money from the taxpayers as opposed to the annual town budget. Be that it's a May, we certainly could use more time to come up with a better figure.
Well, just a couple of things, like back to a question that you asked, Tom, in terms of asking, putting figures out to the public. Are we just going to start with it and not reference the longer term, seven to 10 dollars? I mean, that makes sense to me because we, but I also think people need to know what we're walking up to.
Yeah.
And so how, and I know you talked about this at the meeting last week and had nauseam probably about how, how is this all going to happen? But what's, what are your best thoughts at this point about how to approach the public and how to share the information? And I guess also, I would add to that earlier, Tom said, we've got a really difficult budget already. And we have a lot of important things that are being added to that budget. Conversation I had earlier today with some people at another meeting was, well, what are we not going to fund in favor of this? And so people are worried about law enforcement, people are worried about ambulance service, our schools. Our tax rate in terms of, you know, who's going to buy a house here, who's going to be able to afford to stay here? I mean, all these things sort of, you know, just rumble along. So I think the more we tend to slow that down and think about what are we asking for? And what are our best numbers? Important. And is that within, is it a separate warrant article?
So.
Do people know the cost of it?
My, my two bits work on this in conversations with committees had. Is we, the, the, this, to get the process started, we don't. We're going to be out for a hundred and a ladder flight and it has to be this year. We have to get started. There is no pushing this off until the next budget. There just isn't. And I think it actually would be better if we had an answer in our junior meeting because FERC's part of our surrender process. Right now, we would say. Part of our surrender process. Right now, we would say, here's, here's what we're planning on. But, you know. Taxpayers change their mind and decide not to go forward with this, then we're gonna have to change if we can with Burke and. Yeah, it'd be better not to do that. Um. I think we can break it up, not into bits on the dam. Itself. But this consulting money could be broken out and have that done first. Because, well, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter which way it goes. We have to surrender the license. And there's money that is necessary for that. Asking taxpayers to then pay the, or authorize us to borrow up to say sixteen million or something or. Ten million with the six million on top. That, that could be pushed off until later. Not much later, I mean, you know, maybe six months. But it doesn't, that doesn't have to, it, it could be, but it does not have to be done in June.
Uh, I would agree with that. I think, I think we have, we, we have a responsibility to public to definitely know the full picture. But we can't overwhelm them at phase one of this, which is to concentrate. Just on getting the surrender license done and, and the three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars that's made of that. I think it is possible to, to take step one first, but also educate people that. Much bigger product overall, Dan.
So getting back to the committee, I have four questions. And some of them are statements. So the three hundred thousand to five hundred is needed both ways. Number two, um, and I'll try to find Sandy back there. Um, it's, it's my understanding that neither, no one has money to do the consultant. The three hundred to five hundred thousand, that's on us. But are there funds to repair the dam? Not likely. Okay, that was number two. Number three. Do we have a sense of what the maintenance cost would be to maintain the dam?
Yes, we incorporated that into the third report. If you go to the back.
So you don't know that figure?
Off the top of my head, I have so many figures in my head, but if you go. If you go, if, if the appendix. It's in the appendix.
Thirty thousand a year.
And number four, where'd it go? Oh, okay. Um, and I've not gone to every single dam meeting. However, um, there seemed to be a theme. And so I'm gonna ask the committee. How have you addressed the comment about scare tactics?
Did we, uh, excuse me, I'll, I'll jump in because Steve can jump in too. You mean that you've done this to scare the people?
Correct. Some comments that I heard was, that number is scary.
Well, that, that number is scary.
So I'm asking.
It's, it's very, uh, Steve has a great speech for this. The number is scary. If we're seven million, it's scary. If it's ten million, it's just as scary. So the answer is we're not trying to scare people. We believe based on the work that had been done up to this point in time from a feasibility standpoint, Steve can chastise me if I'm saying something wrong. This is where it's going to be. We can imagine it's three million dollars. But that, that, that doesn't have any basis in a feasibility study to get engineering. Steve, you've got a great answer.
Well, my great answer is sitting right out there with.
Go Sean.
We have this offer that came in. For a bit, for a piece of it. And then it followed with a letter saying that, that they partnered with somebody very, too pretty good firm. To give us what they call a soup to nut that they reported it on there. And I'm gonna look at that. They're looking for about six to eight weeks to do it. Which is, we could get them to do it before the April meeting, so we could chew on that. That would be helpful. But uh, I think it's, it's huge to have more data. That's one. Two, we haven't talked about this formally, but again, I come back to get somebody in who's done a lot of this work, who knows what they're doing, who's unbiased. And educate us for a couple. I used to in my consulting business, uh, firms would call me in and then weren't gonna use me. But they just wanted a couple of hours of two thousand dollar overtime to just get them started. And I think if we had. What I suggested earlier, that sort of thing, that would help us a lot. Especially on this initial, initial transaction. Free. We haven't talked about this because it's way outside of our limit. But uh, there was a contract to do all this stuff for free. He took the dam up. And that contract has expired. I don't know where those people are. But to fully inform the town at some point, you may wanna consider that. We won't, but you may want to. So those things, I, I, the point is there's things we can do about it. The net effect though. I do know that in dam one. They were internally budgeting seven hundred and fifty thousand, that kind of a number. To do all of this stuff. To uh, get to the start of construction.
Or damming.
Or damming. Did I answer your question?
My, my take on it is just. We were talking and being this, I would rather go with a, with a higher number than a cut lower. And be a voter and vote on four million dollars and all of a sudden we need extra two. Cause that comes on you guys and the board, people coming mad at you. So that's not good optics. The second thing I wanna say, it, it sounds like uh, the dam committee, we still have work to do. We, we've fulfilled our initial mandate. In bringing your recommendation, but there's still work that our committee can do and still do. So. I guess I'm asking the board today if they wanna reauthorize the dam committee to continue work throughout this process. Uh, we, we don't have to meet necessarily meet uh, twice a month if not need be, but. Um, there's still work that we could do and communication that needs to be done for the public. So. Uh, I'm asking that if you guys take a moment on continuing the dam committee's work.
I think, uh, if people are willing to do that work. We would certainly be remiss not to say yes to that. I think, you know, I think we, there's many things we, we could talk about. But the one issue before, so we need to decide tonight, really goes back to why we started the dam committee to begin with. And that's the recommendation to abandon plans to produce power and to surrender the FERC license. That was the main, the number one question I wanted answered back in June of last year when we formed the committee. The answer clearly, unequivocally is yes, we should abandon plans. And we should surrender the FERC operating license. We've done three separate engineering firm studies by three separate firms. Nutell, Valner Consultant, the recent one by Klein Schmidt. They all have reached the exact same conclusion. And that conclusion is. This is a marginal site for the production of hydroelectric generation. And with only a twelve foot head. There is no way you're ever going to disrupt revenue from that dam to pay for the capital investment to fix the dam. So you don't spend millions of dollars on hydro generation without any return on that investment. So that's a very easy question. For me to answer, if someone wants to make the motion. On recommendation one here, and everything else that's on this, it's the thing to do, follow some. An affirmative vote on that question. And yes, I totally agree. If, if the, if the visiting committee is willing to follow through on this process. And makes no sense to get a whole other committee of people and then start them as square one knowing nothing. And, and learning all the stuff that you have learned since you.
I'm making a recommendation. Blackboard accepts recommendation one, the dam committee recommending abandoning plants to produce power from a mill dam site and surrender the FERC operating.
Thank you. Just on a little more. Would like to second that. Tracy would second that. Discussion on board members.
One thing to add, so. One, we're talking about a, a vote in June, which also means we have a timeline that's expiring soon on us getting that actually legally set up. Because we have to get everything legally appointed. Uh, two. I've spent a lot of my nights at my computer, uh, damaging my eyes trying to find free money to rebuild the dam. Uh, riveting things to read online. Anyone wants to fall asleep, go, go do that. Um. There's, there's not a lot out there because we're not competitive. It, it's, it's, this is not about emotions. We love our dam. It's the fact that. When you look at what little money is out there to actually rehab these and the people competing for it have. Ginormous dams around the country that support power plants and jobs. Our towns will never, ever come close. We just don't have. Enough here for them to say, yeah, that's worth spending money on that. It just doesn't exist. Maybe that'll change, but I think we're in a situation where those hopes and dreams are gone. We need to make decisions, uh, and this is a start.
Yeah, I can't find money that does not exist. And if anyone thinks it's gonna exist in the current administration of Washington in the next four years, I tend to see it going in the opposite direction.
This ties into the whole, are we trying to scare people? No. We went through painstakingly and tried to estimate fairly what the cost is, not. Lowball it because lowballing is not gonna do anybody any good. It will come back and, and haunt us if we do that. But the. The main thing is, we can't line up any outside funding until we have a plan. Maybe a little here, a little there, but nobody's gonna commit until there's an engineering study done. And that's not. That's within this, at least the start of this next phase. Um, so we have to be prudent about it and just. Go on the assumption that we get no outside funding. I personally believe that that won't be the case. But I can't say how much outside funding we could get. It could be as little as a hundred thousand dollars. It could be as much as three or four million dollars. No idea, but we can't go into this process half vague. It's gotta be, we accept the responsibility for the entire project. However much that will cost, and we'll try like hell and have it not cost that much.
Ready for a vote unless anyone has any. I'm sorry, we're only taking comments from the slug board and from the dam committee. We do have a public uh, comment section after the next part of the agenda. So any further comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion, which is to abandon plans for his power and surrender the FERC operating license. That's unanimous. None for nothing. And part and parcel of that is, yes, we will take you up on your fine offer to continue this work. You've already laid out your plan of action uh, going forward and uh. We will be there to help you. The main issue we have to face, I think it's. The sequencing of funding of this, you know, go with Phil.
One other item, if you look at the end, I put the information regarding last year, the referendum question that went to the town. I put just, so it's clear, cause there's some confusion about that. I also put in the issue of financing and then I put the actual referendum question. The yes and the no ones. When you look at the referendum question. On no, it says seven and a half to eight million. And we're saying ten million, you're probably gonna say, why ten million? Well. First brought up the point, it's well taken. All of the overhead costs for town overhead in order to be able to run the project. Were gonna be covered by an outside organization. Now the town is covering that. In addition, we added inflation in. A million dollars of inflation, about one point three million in the cost associated with managing the project. So that's the difference between seven and a half, eight versus the ten that you're seeing. So, and the reason we put inflation is. The, the prices that we have were based on twenty twenty-three pricing of, of opinion of probable construction cost. And then on top of that, all the project work, engineering and the other. So if you see those two numbers. We're not trying to have a avalanche of numbers to get everybody confused. That's really the only difference. We used those previous studies as the basis for our.
Last year assumed that the project management costs, which are substantial, would be handled by our partner.
Correct.
Now it's the responsibility of the town and our massive town staff, you know. We don't promote you to. So all right, so we have, we have a vote to go forward based on your, your primary recommendation. I feel very comfortable with that. That ultimately will reduce the overall project cost, so we don't have to worry about rehabbing the powerhouse that's not looking for the power. Any final thoughts from the chairman of the?
Well, we, we need to, we also, the board needs to be authorized to go ahead and let Burke know. Well, we need that. Sorry. First thing we have to do is let Burke know that we're coming up on a decision. But they need. Can't say that they need to give us more time. We request that they give us some more time and lay out a timeline for them. For that happening because. It was coming up. And we should get the letter in as soon as.
Absolutely. We, you know, the motion included surrendering the FERC license, so we need to tell them ASAP. That's, that's our intention. I think, you know, they, they would be happy to see us make a concrete decision on that question. And actually wait for our application. At this point, after all these years, they're not gonna say. Oh no, we're gonna give you an extension. I really would be shocked. They don't want, they know that, and we're not the only town that's dealing with the damage. I'm just, you know, if. There are still people besides me who read newspapers. I think that would make all over Maine, the women and America, there are ninety-two thousand damn go. Um, like I, you know, unless, if you really want a, uh.
No, no, it's just, it's just, that's just a.
To me, that's, that would be, that would be step one, right? The immediate, the immediate action after this now to decide to surrender the FERC licenses, let them know about that.
Just to be clear, we would ask Elsina to generate a letter and.
Yeah, with, and you know, you need, if you need legal help to do that, or uh, someone, a, a, a lawyer with a background in regulatory compliance. That's something that we're gonna have to bite the bullet on and get that help. Unless, you know, if you don't have an extra year's, or not, that time to go to law school during that period. We look forward to that, counselor.
Don't send it to him on a sticky note.
And my thoughts were the recommendation number one was pretty straightforward and we were going. Straight ahead and that wasn't really complicated. My thoughts on tonight's meeting was. Recommendation number seven, which is the money and how are we approaching? June, I thought that was gonna be our complicated question.
Yes.
Of the evening and then how, it's not like we're all done right now. We do, we need to move. On, on the money, don't we? So that the public knows about.
I think, I think the way I read your recommendations, everything flows from, from question number one. We're, we've just decided, yes, obviously you now have to let Burke know and obviously we have to. Hire legal consultants and engineering consultants to help us do the FERC study and, and we have to look at the, at the finances. We all have to do that together.
And so that's not something we're doing too long. I'm just.
Number seven, you, you speaking to number seven.
Yeah, seven, we will require funding and, and we need to, you know, do some further exploration of, you know. We don't know it right now. Do we, do we present this as a separate ballot item?
That's part of my question, I'm sorry. How do we?
I would look, I, I think the first, uh, you know, the dam committee will remain constituted and working on this. I would look to them for uh. Direction on what, what they feel is the best way to go forward with secret count approval.
Oh, we, we always dump it on the slide board.
If we're gonna do that, we, we probably should, um. Be a separate agenda item on that in the next, uh, our next meeting, which would be March fourth at least.
Yeah, my question is, how soon do we have to know that? Because when our. Valid generated and what's our?
April twenty-sixth is our town meeting, uh, vote to validate what's going to be on the referendum in June. So, um. Not a whole lot.
So. Yeah, we, we have that amount of time. Um. The, our discussions amongst our committee is that. We're really tasked with trying to figure out what this is gonna cost and the ins and outs and the details. How this is presented to the town is definitely more. Is, is really not what we're good at. We don't know statutory requirements. I mean, some of us do, but. It's, it ultimately is, is a political decision as to how to present this to people. And uh. As with my other hat on. Dam committee, I don't feel that our committee is the right, the right avenue for that.
What we did last time, uh, almost exactly a year ago, so we got our town attorney involved. I'm Paul, the one that came up with the verbiage for the referendum item that the town voted on. He studied the issue and came up with some lawyerly wording that would uh, get at the uh. At the cost, how to handle that. So I think that's one of the first things we need to do is get him on board again and help us with. Get his idea of what, what would legally pass amongst, and how that would be presented.
Like if, if he can't decide whether it's best for our town to try to include this within. The general budget or to separate it out.
But I think he, you know, he would have some advice for, you know. At this point, we need the, the advice of. People who are smarter than we are, which is a large universe of people that are out there that probably have dealt with complex issues like this that we haven't done, but. It'll be helpful. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that we can do both at the same time. We can have. We can have legal representation help us with producing the surrender, uh, sorry, the extension letter that we need to send for. Uh, and even if that's them recommending somebody else that is even outside of the firm that. Uh, and even if that's them recommending somebody else that is even outside of the firm that. That's detail. But at the same time, we can. We can ask. What, what are? What are our best legal options? I have a feeling we know what they are, but it would be, it would be better to find out. The mechanics about splitting it out and having a separate kind of meeting for analysis, big. Whatever the options are, it would be good, it would be good to discuss it with somebody outside of, of our group and has experience with that.
Yep.
Yeah, I was also thinking Chris's idea of getting a couple hours with somebody who might really know what it's going to cost. To do this surrender application. So if those things both happen during the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Prior to our next meeting, that would be really.
Yeah, my, my gut reaction is that, as I said earlier, our budget's already more than we can afford.
Right.
Adding three hundred thousand on it for this item for, for one. A one-time shot with this, it makes it impossible for you to have a fighting chance to have a budget. That uh comes close to balancing revenues and expenses. I would like, you know, if we can, if we can figure out a way to stretch that cost out. Not have it all fall on our head uh next year. I feel better about things. It's my, go ahead.
I was gonna say, just a, a thought. Historically, we've done consulting with. The compensation, sidewalks, paving, gravel. Can we get a sense of? The ballpark average? To know what kind of.
How much is the study?
Many budget we could have for a study.
Well, the study for clientship on this project was just under twenty-three thousand. It was nineteen-three. That was just the, the study was the Doral Palmer for uh some of the guys you just mentioned were in the thirty thousand dollar range. So, yeah, that's what, you know, you're looking at uh.
We're looking at around maybe probably for consultation, about on average, two hundred dollars an hour for engineering.
Okay, so are we expecting the budget committee to be discussing this or?
It's not, it's not in the budget right, right? It's right, not in the budget, right? Um, I think we have to, we have to provide a recommendation on that. Uh, going forward and we need to, we, we need some help to come up with, with a recommendation that is more informed than we have.
Okay.
Right now. So although I would love to answer your question right tonight. But it, I just don't feel that we are, you know, we, we don't have the expertise. To do that from a financial standpoint, which maybe it might be helpful to also. Talk with uh someone from a financial institution who would look at the best financing option. They, although. You can, you can establish a line of credit with a company that would allow us to. Uh, manage some of the initial costs here and also help us work toward firming up, uh, how will we finance a, a much larger project, whether it's. That seven to ten million dollar interest bill talked about. Um, we'll, we'll need, we'll need some outside expertise.
So would we be calling Johnson now to ask?
Well, someone like, you know, like, um. And we need to contact multiple people. I, I'm really happy that the local construction firm is interested in providing us the cost, but. You know, you, you don't do uh no bid, non-competitive construction projects in the ten million dollar range by only talking to one company. No matter how much. Yeah, there are, there are other banks out there that um would also, you know, they would like our business. Um, and that's again, we need to talk to someone like that. Tom, Tom, we know very well, he would be a good one to, to start with. Yeah, I agree.
Well, the banks terms down or they won't.
Well, okay, so there, I'm, I'm going to say this because I thought about it. There is, there is a chance that nobody's going to lend us this amount of money. And the reason why is because we have. Figured that the expense is somewhere around seven hundred and something thousand dollars a year for the town for financing this. A lender would look at it and say, that's. I'd have to do the math, you know, that's a fifteen percent of your current budget, you know. Is that something that the taxpayers are going to be able to sustain for twenty-five years? And. I've, I have my doubts and if I were a financial institution, I'd have my doubts too. Um, so we have. I was. I was pondering this question. I was wondering what is the largest amount of money that this municipality has ever borrowed? This is, I'm sure this is bigger than that by a lot and it's also not secured by any collateral. So when we lease, when we finance a, a fire truck for a million dollars, if we don't pay, they take the truck. And if we have them finance a dam and we don't pay, they're not taking the dam.
We could be the first.
Probably the largest single project the town we've done in one fell swoop to the past was in the eighties. When we built the wastewater treatment plant and sewer collection system.
Yes.
Which the next time you go down to Bill O'Phil's office of the wastewater station, where I've been a number of times recently. It's, it's a huge project. That tore the town apart for a long time that no one even remembered because it's all underground. And the wastewater plant is on the edge of town and no one even knows it's there. But, you know, that was multiple millions of dollars, but most of it was funded through federal grants because at that point. It was a big focus of the United States to improve the environmental. Uh, quality of our country and the rivers and everything. They, they did that. Um, this would not, as we, again, we get that to like, where's the money coming from? Don't look to uh the federal government to provide a whole bunch of grants on this one. That's not, that's not feasible, I agree with.
So one, one of the action items that we need to do right away is to get at least a preliminary. Sign from the financial institutions, lending institutions of whether or not we can even borrow this amount of money. And if the answer is no, they'll, it might say, well, we'll lend you up to five million. Well, then that would mean we'd have to find. The rest, the rest from somewhere. And again, the, the main problem is a cart and horse. Be great to know where all this money was coming from and where, and that we could count on it before going ahead. We cannot do that. We have to go ahead first. And then figure it out as we go. However, we can at least get a sense from a lending institution, institutions plural. As to what, uh, what our borrowing options are. Also. Get a better sense. Uh, when we did the numbers, we put in an estimate for what the uh. What the interest rate would be in the repayment terms. We don't know. We could be high or we could be low. Uh, we don't, we don't know about that either.
Well, there are, you know, there are other institutes, Main Municipal Bond Bank, for instance, their, their business is to help. Towns like us facing major expenses like this to finance that for us and. And their rates, because they're a quasi-public entity, tend to be more competitive than a more competitive bank would be. So. So we have, we need some, but we need some help from someone within that sector, in the banking sector to help us. Identify pathways forward for finance, but, you know, so at least we start out with the, you know, with this decision. We know we're surrendering the license and we, yes, we have a bunch of steps here and, and uh. We have to start knocking them off one by one, but again, a difficult project of, of many years ahead of us.
Question of the dam, dam committee, uh, members, who's available for remedial and or if we have further questions?
I, I, chair.
Oh.
Start with the chair, please. And then if you need more detail that he can't, Chris, I'm.
We, we, fortunately, we have a, a. Quite a lot of, of information that's been gathered and it's already been, been made publicly available, so. Where I, I feel that the committees have did a good job in that we, we were given the task and did the task. The information is there, it can be scrutinized. Um, so.
Any final comments from the dam committee members?
I just want to thank uh the dam committee members, including those brought here. Uh, I know. During this process, I've learned a lot, especially from this man here, Brian, when it comes to presentation. Hand him a sheet of paper with a couple lines on it and he can make a PowerPoint forty pages long. Chris, he's, you know, a very intelligent man. I've learned a lot from him and, and. I just want to thank the board as well for placing their trust in the committee. And for us going forward to try to get more answers for the town's vote. I think that kind of transparency is most welcome by the public. And I hope we can get some more answers for you guys in the coming months and then all the timelines there and we need to, we need to get some answers soon, so. Thank you guys for placing your trust.
I thank you for doing the one thing I asked the members to do. Went back in June was to keep an open mind. Follow the data, make the recommendation you think is best for the town to build a fast drop in the future. We did that. And that's not much more we can ask. All right, can we put the dams to bed for tonight? All right, let's move on to the town manager report. Alcina has a verbal report for us. Go ahead.
Yes, so as everyone, uh, goes, as we've been driving around, you've probably seen electronic signs. Uh, stating that there's going to be construction happening on South Street and. East Main or, or Route seven and fifteen, Gordon Contractor and Main DOT are partnering to fix that, or. Basically reconstruct that intersection. Starting today, they're mobilizing and staging equipment. March seventeenth, they're going to be starting construction. Construction is going to be overnight, so starting from six P M to six A M. There's going to be flaggers actually out there and it's going to be one lane traffic only considering those hours. Um. They did report to me a couple nights, it's probably going to be loud if we live downtown. So be prepared to hear banging jackhammers and all that kind of stuff as they. Try to get through the frost and as they're putting in new utility lines, rerouting them and whatnot. Um, this pro, whole process project is, or at least the noisy portion, um, it's gonna probably last about two weeks, but. After that, it's gonna, the construction of, or final construction, they're looking at mid-May, end of May for. Flat hole intersection to be fixed and the lane widened for um trucks to be joining on to seven from fifteen. Uh, second thing is the town budget advisory committee met successfully for the first time last Tuesday and March fourth. So thank you everybody for the first meeting. Um, and then we also encourage the public to come out and listen. Uh, the following meetings are going to be March eleventh, eighteenth and twenty-fifth, and they're all Tuesdays at six thirty P M and hope to see Thursday. That's it, that's all.
Any questions for Alcina?
All right, um, I know we're not in mud season yet, but we're on and off and close and it's coming and et cetera. How are we uh set for our equipment? Coming out of winter, trucks, graders, we're not hearing any bad stories or.
Yeah.
Down machinery or?
No, I haven't heard anything about down machinery. Um. Currently, we all have smoke clouds and sanders along and all that good stuff because, you know, things like every other night, we're getting some kind of precipitation. Um, but as far as mud season goes, I haven't heard anything from Jeff. Jeff has reported that there's been major equipment that's down or. Not functional properly, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, he didn't mention anything to.
No. Was thinking more as well, the major hotspots that may pop up and we'll address them as.
I know some, some roads where we got that plate that'll warm up, got socked, there, it's, it's a nexus between. You either have frozen solid or you already started mud season on some roads and now we're frozen again, kind of a tie game.
Actually being in the forties.
Yeah.
Mud season.
Correct.
Yeah, are all the roads that need to be posted, posted. Um, I wondered that today as I saw this really big semi going down my road, which is.
Yeah.
Horrible mess right now.
Yeah, not yet. Not that one where I know signs have been ordered, um, something that we didn't see in Bill, so that's okay. Some are coming, but you're not.
Um, I was just gonna say, I, on my, on my phone last year at this time, a picture came up. And it's in much better condition.
Is that your road?
It was my road. Much better, much, much better.
All right.
Not perfect, but mud season and I'll take this mud season. Appeared to last, so.
Any other questions for Alcina and Joel?
Um, for our two road committees or uh road teams. Can we ensure that when they're evaluating what needs to be done, um, it isn't just about how much traffic is on there? Because we know there's a change between how many homes there are thirty years ago now, but also the type of vehicles that are actually used around because we have a lot of small businesses that work on heavy equipment. And you may have equipment going up and down your road all day long that is way bigger than a minivan or a motorcycle. Um, can you put it on the radar to make sure that something isn't overlooked when they're doing their evaluations?
Good point. One tractor trailer is worth how many regular vehicles? All right, anybody else for Alcina? All right, um, so we're going back to uh opening session for closing remarks by members of the public. With Toronto, you had a, a comment you wanted to make earlier?
No. No need to go earlier, okay.
Are, are you the designated?
No, no. He went first the other night.
Okay, all right. I imagine you all did. All right, Steve, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to do something that nobody wouldn't do, but I'm going to agree with Tom and Chris. But I think when it comes to uh listening to somebody, they can come with lease cost, lease cost. I would do that at my house. So I would listen to that contractor and put it in the mix. They get fixed price on, but I would listen because money is money. And I think if we can just forget the dam for a minute. And we look at the real problem this town had, it was FERC. It wasn't the dam, it was FERC and it was the FERC license. And do we keep it or do we surrender it? What do we do? So Tom, I think you're absolutely right. To solve that problem is step number one. We decided to get rid of the hydro site, site. Now we're into surrender the application. What's that going to take? The, out of that application is going to tell you what you have to do to the dam. I think we jumped the way ahead and headed down because dams an issue when. Who knows, until we do the application, it might say, the application say. With FERC approval, here's what you have to do to the dam, and then you can say, what's it going to cost to do that? I think we're way kind of sideways because we, we focus so much on the dam versus the process. Um, so the other thought I had as I sat here, listening. And I typed in FERC consultant Maine, just to see where they are, who they are. The first thing up is a guy Kyle Allcourt and Melissa Fly. Anybody talked to him? They can be contacted for more information about FERC licensing and relicensing process in Maine. That would be free.
Yeah.
So before we talk about Korn Schmidt and Engage Consultants and. I mean, TRC and Augusta, there's that type of word. I would talk to these folks and who do they work with? And that would be free. But I think.
I'll see us taking down notes right now.
I think we're back to ground zero. What I'd go back to, I'd say, you know, the dam is, the dam's hasn't been everything. And it really isn't until we figure out what we have to do to it, to the application. That's my two cents. Only one more thing. This guy's approved eighty-seven thousand dollars a night with not a piece of paper. Can you get a piece of paper? That's all I ask.
We actually haven't approved the.
Yeah, we, we, we said he has approval to withdraw money from that, but we still expect him to bring an estimate and.
Yeah, I'd like to see his numbers and just, you know, see the basis. I, I don't, yes and no, I don't, it's important, but it's just, I'd like to see something right. Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
All right, and I, you know, you're right. It's, it's hard, it's hard enough, it's just hard to look at one piece of this damn thing without losing. Yourself amongst all the other data that surrounds it.
I know.
But I'm, I'm a big believer in, okay, you knock off step one, then you work on step two, but. You gotta keep it in the back of your mind, but you can't keep everything to the forefront. You gotta do this.
I think we just, I think we just, last year we just jumped to the damage and I think we should jump to the application issue maybe. Just hindsight being twenty.
Having lived through that, I don't want to live through it again, so we're, we're on a different pathway, right? Other members of the public? Yes, sir.
Hi, Jake, I'm, I'm gonna. Oh, I'm not saying we disagree with Steve, but um. On the, on the estimating cost for the, for the, this project. It's, it's so overwhelming for everybody, or I'll speak for myself, to try to capture everything that's. In the, in the presentation and sort it out in. In order and give it numbers. My idea is. If the first part of it is what was required by three, five-year studies. The years of deficiencies of the dam. With letters to the town from the FERC. People, have regional engineers who had been here and inspected the dam. And they had as late as the last one, August twenty or twenty-three. Designating exactly what repairs needed to be done. To the dam with pictures, by engineers. Everything that any contractor would need. To, to make those repairs. And in fact, they had authorized the repairs to be done, some of the repairs to be done, by saying you need to do these. As soon as possible and not wait for. Other applications for other permits. So that we have that in hand, the town has that in hand, and can do it today. With the funding approved. A gentleman came in here with a reputable uh, constru- construction company. Back with a uh, partnered with an engineering group. Klein Schmidt who we're using, actually using both of these towns, these people. Um, and presented a proposal to do exactly what FERC has already said you must do, authorize. And the townspeople have voted on, this is what they want to do. And in some manner, former manner, the way the resolution was worded. They sort of authorized the funding of it, pending budget approval. I believe the wording in, in the thing was if you keep the dam, if you remove the dam, there's no cost, and again. I haven't seen a written statement that says. The Atlantic Salmon or anybody else. Signed this and we will do it. Maybe you folks have, I don't, I don't have any idea on that. But. The gentleman, the gentleman that was here made this proposal. And I'm assuming he was ready to sign it, I mean, you all could draw your own opinions from the speech he made, and he actually forwarded that to you folks, I believe, with a, some kind of an email. For half of the cost that was estimated. That's been estimated, put out to the public, maybe not by you, but it's been in the papers. And it's gone from seven, eight million to eleven to sixteen. In the observer, the same thing was regurgitated all over again. Even after this gentleman made it. So, for that part A, just the repairs of the dam, there is a fixed number here that could be used for budgeting. I, I understand about RFPs, you just can't go. Pick really nearly anybody you want, but at least it's a, it's a number, and if you have any faith in the gentleman at all, it's a hard number. Much, much more than you have. Right? Good people here trying to make honest estimates. But it's, the thing is so overwhelming in my mind, and I, I've attended every dam committee meeting. Well, how do we get to a number that we won't betray the town and say it's ten million and turns out to be six, sixteen million? So you have one hard number. So if you started there. Surrendering of FERC licenses. Well, let me finish with the. And this, this same contractor partnered with Klein Schmidt has made an offer, at least I have heard. That he will do the whole scope of this thing. If you, with Klein Schmidt. He will give you a number, will give the town a number, to do everything soup to nuts. The town would write the check. And I don't know if he meant for the whole project, but at least for the first part of it, he said, I won't require payment until twenty twenty-seven. Before I go any further, does anybody disagree with what I'm saying? Do they have, do they think I'm? Way off base?
Well, I, I just want to point out, number one, we, we don't have authorization at this point to spend one dollar fixing the dam. Is that a true statement?
That's a true statement.
The mere fact that people said they didn't want to remove the dam was not authorization to spend billions to fix the dam. And the second point is, I, I appreciate that local contractors are coming forward, but it's illegal. To give a contract for a project of that size or pretty much any size without going out to the competitive bidding process. You know, you can get, you can, it's helpful to have a ballpark figure now, but you know, the solution is not. Solution might work in Chicago, uh, but that's not gonna work in Dover Foxcroft, so. Let us, let us follow the path that we're on. Which is to uh, work to surrender the FERC license. The issue about how to repair the dam, which we've known is, it's gonna cost a lot. For years now, we have never raised the money to do that because. The money that, that would be required was just unaffordable to the town, we have to figure out a way to finance that, and that's still something that we have ahead of us. Want to say anything, Steve?
Uh, I just want to say that the um, if recommendation number six that we just made tonight is, I'll, I'll just read it very quickly. The dam committee should work to receive a complete project cost estimate from. This, the same group. Uh, who submitted the unsolicited, unsolicited offer for the dam project work, when bids for that work are required. So. It's, I mean, it's great, nobody's saying that, that the presentation we got that. Bad thing, it's, it's a really good thing, it's an incomplete part of the entire process that we're going to need to satisfy the FERC surrender. It's a very large piece of it. Um, so what we, what we're recommending with, with number six here, is we sit down. With them, we go through the numbers, we make sure. Because in our first meeting, it was clear that he hadn't anticipated a whole bunch of other things, and so he went back uh, and got more information. So we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, he understands what. The whole process is required. The actual remediation, the fixing of the dam as per FERC's um, letters. That's the easiest part, but there, but there is more to it than that, and. You know, still. This gets back to my point about scary numbers, take the ten million, half it, I'm still scared by five. Half that, two point five, that's almost an entire budget. Year's budget for this town. That's still a scary number. And. To me, it doesn't get any scarier, any less scary at one million, because that's. That's a very large amount of money, um, if it got down to one million, I'd be, I'd be thrilled with that versus the, the ten. But these are, these are huge numbers, and just arbitrarily reducing them, there's still huge numbers.
I under- I understand about, about the high numbers and it's scary, it's gonna be scary to everybody, but it seems to me. And just like Steve just said here. We're talking about consultants, then he goes in and punches in some numbers and comes up with a. Comes up with a name. You write it down, would, wouldn't it be? Wouldn't it be normal to have that as part of the process? Long before we got here. I mean, we've got estimates of consultants of what, three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand? When we could have a number of nothing.
Oh, we, there's nobody that's gonna do this for nothing. There, there's nobody that's gonna do.
And we, and we just decided tonight to surrender FERC license, so that's one why we're looking at a consultant for that.
Maybe, maybe I shouldn't say nothing, but at least this information might help us on a project.
And it, and it probably will, and, and that's one reason why, and you heard in the discussion here. One possible approach is to not ask for the townspeople for any specific amount of money for this consulting process in the June budget. But instead, get more information, now that we know the direction we want to go, and get more information and come back to the townspeople in three or four months. After, with a, with a firm, firm number. Saying that we've got, we went out, we went in, out with bid, we've got three consultants, here's the amount. We, we do this all the time with other things, it's just unfortunately, the budget process is hitting us. Right at the wrong time, and we, it took as long, as the committee took as long to get to this point, and did, because it's a complicated thing. And it's just unfortunate, bad timing.
So. What you're saying is, the townspeople were gonna go and vote on the project based on this information, and. After that, after you've done your line six warfare with outside, um. With another contractor, you may have maybe a firm number of more information for a better number.
Yeah, yeah, so. It, it depends on how we decide, we're, we're not deciding that tonight, it depends on how we're going to. Approach this with the townspeople because. There is no money allocated from the townspeople for any of this work.
Yeah, but this board does not have the authority to go out and spend eight million dollars on anything without.
Or e- or even, or even a hundred thousand.
No, no, oh, respect, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people don't know, I mean. Alright, we'd like to wrap up the public comments, actually I've got two hands up, go ahead, Sandy, and then you're here, have that.
Something that you guys said about, you know, maybe being able to spread this across multiple budget years. I guess I might ask the question on how brave we might want to get in asking for this additional extension. Maybe we don't want to tip our hand and say, give us an extension, we'll have it done in a year. Maybe just say, give us an extension, maybe we could put some of this off until the next budget year, I mean, I'm not advocating kicking the can down the road, but.
We, we'll let them tell us.
Timing wise. You know.
Well, I think, you know.
Possibility.
When we got our last extension, it was for two years, basically, so. I'd like to see fifty years myself, because then I won't have to worry about.
Anyway.
Yes, ma'am, you had a question?
Um, yes.
I, was that by yourself?
I think Rory Chambers.
Okay, no.
Um, and I just had a comment, I had been following along and gone to the dam committee meeting as well, and. Um, on the ori- the original referendum question, the seven and a half to eight million dollars was given on that question. But there was also information about in the town that it really wouldn't be that much because we had grant monies possible, and there was also money coming from hydroelectric generation. Hydroelectric generation is not gonna happen now.
Right.
So, people who voted for this voted with those things in mind, and it wasn't all of the taxpayers who voted it. As a yes, it was the people who went that day, who were registered voters, who voted for it. So, as a taxpayer, I just want you guys, you know, to think about that, whether it's eight million dollars or sixteen million dollars. The reality is, we cannot afford it. And I'm speaking as. A resident of Dover Foxcroft. For myself and other people, we are already facing, in the future, over the next twenty-five years, it's given, we will have property tax increases just based on inflation. That's a reality. There are a large number of people in this town who lived on very fixed incomes, who cannot afford it, who are. Some of them are barely getting by right now on the edge. Um, that make hard choices, and I think you guys need to consider that as well in this process. Um, when you said, well, you don't know if the bank will even finance it or that type of thing, you've also got to think about the hardship it's gonna place on the people in this town. Not all of them, some of them will certainly be impacted. Um. The other part of that is, people are already going to be facing increases in just their coming up immediately, insurance costs, when they get their insurance reevaluation done. Because the cost to replace their property is gonna be higher, and their insurance company is gonna be higher, those are fixed costs that they have no control over. Um, as we all know, grocery prices are going through the roof. Our costs for power in the future could be certainly much higher. And other energy bills and things that we don't have control over, those are very fixed costs to get by. There's no bubble room in a lot of people's budgets. And whether it's six million, eight million or ten million, the reality is, we can't afford it. Um. And, and the part of that too is, even with those numbers, the way I understand it, if the fishway doesn't work, we have to pay for it to fix it until it does. That's what I'm understanding, so these numbers, even if you get the best design and all of that, you might still have to pay more. And then my, also, what I've gotten from the dam committee, committee meeting is, the dam, it doesn't address the flooding issues that we have. Am I correct in that?
It exacerbates the flooding issues we have.
So, the, these are all things that we're gonna have even more costs of. On top of that, you're looking at a thirty thousand as an estimate right now, just to maintain it every year on top of the cost of building it. So. I know that. The. Sorry. In those numbers that we were given, that also doesn't include the possibility of higher cost for finance charge, yes, it could be lower, it could be higher. Um, and the cost of the actual construction. With other inflation costs, this is a multi-year project. There could be things they run into, there could be overruns even on top of that. Again, six, eight, ten, sixteen million, we can't afford it. And my thoughts are also the fact that we could have it removed for free.
Which is why we proposed that very solution last year.
Yes.
And, and you're preaching to the choir on this one, obviously. The, the cost of keeping the dam is prohibitively expensive in my viewpoint.
Yeah.
Which is why last year we presented proposal to remove the dam. And no cost to the town using grant funds to get that problem fixed once and for all. Unfortunately, the voters saw it differently and they voted not to remove the dam, so.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, we can't afford this.
And that's why.
Need to maintain rooms, pay our teacher, the staff that works for the town, there are so many other things, and even in that structure, the town is gonna have increased costs in. Equipment, increased costs in facilities, electricity, power. Heating, all of those things that we as individual citizens are gonna have, the town is gonna have, and then therefore, we're all gonna be paying for that as well.
So our, our form of government, the. Meeting select board, that form of government is that we, we do whatever the voters say. And a town council or a city government can make those sorts of decisions without direct input from people. So, it really doesn't matter what any of us think, and how. We view the burden on the tax, for the taxpayer. We have no authority to override the, the vote of the people, and it. That, that, that's just the way it is, and we can understand it as much as you, you've said, and ultimately, it's up to the people. Of the town, and unfortunately, that also just means who showed up to vote, um, we, it's true for any vote. And so, um, that's the system of government that we have.
I understand that, and you're saying the next step is funding for the project? And part of that is, do we just tell whatever the, nobody came up with the range between three hundred and five hundred thousand, what have you? I think that. You need that money because you could just surrender the hydroelectric piece anyway, but part of that is. As someone who's in the town, I need to know the full range, whether it's ten to sixteen million dollars, not just. The initial piece of three to five hundred thousand, because I'm telling you, I would be very angry next year to come back and the budget says, oh yeah, we need a multi-year plan of borrowing. Ten or sixteen million dollars, or whatever the cost is gonna end up being. And, and I'm, why didn't you tell me this last year when you had three hundred or five hundred thousand dollars voted to do this? You see what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
You guys are in a very lovely spot, I understand that and I recognize that.
We, we will, we will be telling people the full cost of the project, including the financing charges. But we have to ask for this initial tranche of money to get going on, on the surrendering of the FERC license, so.
I understand that.
Agree, I agree with everything you say, and I. But, but it's, yeah, I. People, people are having, are having a lot of trouble uh, paying the bill, but we have to at least put the bill before them and have them say yay or nay, that's our, our system of work. Every, as a response to Lori.
I, well, I just want to thank you because I think there are a lot of people for whom. Oh, another three or four hundred dollars a year on their property taxes isn't a big deal. Some of those people are in this room, and for other people, it's a huge deal, and they won't be able to.
Some of those people are in this room. And for other people, it's a huge deal. And they won't be able to live here anymore. And they won't be able to pay their taxes. And so I, Lori, really appreciate you coming forward. You're, you're very clear. And you're really educated yourself by coming to all these meetings. And, um, I just wanna appreciate that. So thank you.
Cause it's, it's not just the dollar amount for you, but three hundred something dollars.
Right.
It's like in twenty-five years, you'd be paying nine thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars, or if your property's valued at three fifty, seventeen thousand twenty-five dollars. That's a lot of money.
The estimate is over seven hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty-five years, which our police chief has pointed out would pay his entire department's cost during that time. So. But again, to be beside those bodies, I wanna have any, one final question from a member in the public who hasn't spoken already. Dr. Swett?
Uh, what you folks have been discussing tonight and the public has been discussing is a big deal. A really big deal for all the property owners of our town, probably the biggest deal in the forty-six years I've lived here. And I think what this means is that regardless of the details, both the Board of Selectmen and the ongoing second version of the dam committee should be think, have foremost in their minds citizen education. Getting the information out there early and frequently and in a form that is accessible to the public. Because I think, again, regardless of the individual decisions that would have to be made, no matter which direction people going, uh, you want to have your citizens, our neighbors, informed and say, okay, I know what's going on and I'm either for it or I'm against it. And I'm had, I'm ha, I'm having a chance to express myself. I really, and I think that, this is just my opinion, but there was a deficiency of education, uh, in the report and the of subsequent discussions prior to the election. Uh, and I think it's no one's fault. And then there's a tremendous amount of apathy in our town, not the people who are sitting right here. These people commit their time. And, uh, but there are a lot of people in our town who only get excited about it when, when the, the ax is about to fall, as it were. And so that's my pitch, is that we really need um, a lot of emphasis. We have a member of the press here tonight, but there are lots of other ways to educate people. And unfortunately, I, I'm just sure that there's a tremendous amount of discussion about this that doesn't take place in this room and by people who unfortunately do not have uh, access to the kind of information that you folks need.
Un, unquestionably true. And I, and also there's a lot of misinformation out there. And how to combat that is something I, I just not know the answer to. I spent most of my life in the communications field. I know how to get the truth out. I don't know how to come, combat.
Nothing's perfect, but I think that, that should be rather than the details of the, of the permits and what kind of thing you're gonna build and so on, it should be in the front, in every meeting, people should be thinking, how are we gonna get the results of this meeting of, to the people of the town in a way that it draws their attention? I don't have the answer either.
Well, we're kind of, okay, I wanna end the public comments section because we've exhausted, gone way over the, I'll limit a lot of those questions. Are there any final comments by members of the select board? Do you need any further thing on what you thought about earlier?
Not so much.
Okay, not so much. Thank you, Jane.
Need supper.
Appreciate it. I, I bless you, Jane. Steve, you want a final comment?
Nope. I, I just wanna, well, I just wanna say I thank everybody, uh, all the people that have come to the meetings, all the people who, the committee who ran the meetings. It's been, uh, it's been great.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn, Steve?
I would love to make a motion.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So, cause we're all tired, um, we, we are well aware that, uh, the costs are kinda scary and balancing a budget is hard. And it's unfortunate that there's people out there think that behind scenes, things are happening and like we're making decisions that no one's aware of. Well, you're all here seeing our smiling faces right now. We have our committees and we're doing the very best we can. And we all feel inflation and we worry about the same things you do. And um, I would say for people that maybe aren't sure how things work, please volunteer. Come sign up committees, run to be on the select board, get a part of the process and get your voice heard if you think it isn't. But I think you'll see that we're trying very hard to be transparent and get it out there. And if you have any ideas how we can do better, please let us know.
Would any, thank you. Is there a second to the emotional turn? I'll get, I'll give you Joel. And we're, and of course, we're all okay for going along the end. That's good. Thank you very much. I'd personally like to give a.